Righty. Thank you, Vicky, and sorry for my text to you. I didn't see you pop in while I was texting you, but I'm glad you're here. And then, so we'll go ahead and get started. Susan will join us shortly.
Thanks for the reminder, Chelsea.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and do the roll call of council members. So Kristen. Amber.
Here.
Chelsea here, Leanna here. Tricia.
Here.
And Vicky.
Here.
Vicky?
Here. Here.
We don't have sound from you.
What is the deal?
Do you? Can someone else make some noise and we can just double check that it's not on our end?
I am.
Oh, yes. Hold on. Can anybody else come off mute and say something so we can see if it's our end or if it's Vicky? Riley? No, we can't hear Riley either. Okay, so it looks like it might be. So we'll take just a minute and troubleshoot.
I did have, this is, is this the same one I used this morning? I did have trouble when I went to do the. Yeah, they, it was the speaker that I was turning out of. Some reason the speaker that was, that it went to automatically on the computer didn't work.
Oh, yeah.
I had to change it to that and then it worked.
Because you should right next to the unmute, the little pop-up menu gives you the option of picking a different speaker.
Yeah, and I have it on that one, so I'm not sure.
Have it on the projector.
If I put it on my computer, will it give feedback, though? Or if it doesn't, the projector.
It should.
Oh.
Okay, let's try someone else. All right, definitely get somebody to try talking now.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Vicky's talking, we can't hear it.
Can you hear me?
Nope, still nothing. Okay, but everybody else can hear her, but not us. So we will.
I can't hear you now. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I was just testing it.
All right, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yay!
Great.
Now we can hear all of you guys. That's very exciting. Okay, so now we can really start the meeting. So Vicky, just for the minute, can I get you to?
I am here.
Right, or for the recording, I should say. Okay. Can I get somebody to read the school verse?
This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the roof be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school.
Thank you. All righty, that takes us into item 1.4, agenda modifications. Does anybody have any agenda modifications?
I think we didn't get to 4.7.2, the attendance policy. Is that correct, Susan?
I think it's not here for the first reading.
Yeah, I don't have the attendance policy written.
Okay, no, you don't. You're right.
Okay.
Great, so we will table item 4.7.2 to the next meeting. Right. Any other agenda modifications?
Under approved contracts, 4.6.1 is still in the finance committee. They did not pass it last night. The SLP has not been completed. The other two are also for the pay scales, the certificated management scales did not pass to the finance committee yet. They are doing their work. All those. So none of those things will be ready for approval tonight.
Okay, so we will go ahead and table those items then. So did you get the Alex items? 4.5.2, 4.5.3, 4.6.1, and 4.6.4. Okay, yeah, thank you. I'll ask one more time every time I ask.
Are all of the approved contracts out?
No, just.
Just 4.6.1 and 4. Okay. All right, any other agenda modifications? Hearing none, and we will move into item 1.5. Do we have any audience members here that would like to address the charter council on items that are not on the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay, then that takes us to item 2, the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda when somebody's ready to make one. I'm just saying, I want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Amber. Do I have a second?
A second, love.
Thank you, Kristen, for the second. I will call for the vote. Kristen?
Hi.
Amber?
Hi.
Vicky?
Hi.
Tricia?
Hi.
Leanna?
Hi.
And Chelsea, hi. That takes us right into item 3, faculty. Nick or Sarah with the grade level report?
Hi, everybody. Yeah, so everybody's busy getting ready to start school. We just had our faculty in service today and it seemed to go well. People seem to be in pretty good spirits. I think probably everybody's pretty excited about going back with not restrictions and things like that. And also, I wanted to give a report out about summer school. So the last two weeks, we had summer school and it was attended by approximately 20 to 25 students, I think I would say. And with four teachers with lots of good support, grade level groupings for second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, like that. And it seemed like it went really well. I had about six students each day and we worked on different math concepts, ELA concepts. We painted a lot together and the kids who came, like, there wasn't a lot of, like, there one day, not there. The kids who came were there pretty much every day. And they seemed to be in good spirits the whole time. And then we had a party at the end with all the kids coming together and so it was really good. And I, this is my, I did it last year as well, and I think it's a really great program and service we're offering. I think that boosting attendance maybe by promoting it more as like a camp-like type thing, and I don't know how much language we can use with like the grant that funds it or whatever. But because, you know, it really could be a camp, it was a camp-like atmosphere and so just maybe that could be a way to boost attendance in the future. But overall, I think it really, really well. And that's all I have. Sorry, do you have anything?
I, I don't at this point. I'm dealing with COVID right now, so I'm still, still in isolation and gonna get over that quickly so I can start school. But everyone is enthusiastic. They're just, you know, getting ready and getting their brains around another different year, so that's exciting.
All right. Well, I hope you feel better and heal quickly, Sarah. That is a rough time to be stuck on quarantine. I feel ya. All righty, does anybody have any questions for Nick or Sarah? All right, well, I will say good luck on the upcoming school week. And that'll take us into item 4.1, Amber, the finance committee report.
Okay, so we had a pretty lengthy meeting, so, and some of it what we talked about later on. But if you guys have questions, I should probably ask them. But biggest thing is cash, it's solid today, so we're going in stronger through the year than we thought, so that's huge. Same plan throughout, not changing anything. So what we talked about last month, pretty much the same place we are right now. We're gonna start doing budget revisions, so there's that. The biggest next thing we talked about was the payroll increases and I don't know how much Susan really wants to pay the warranty, she probably has some. Okay, it's okay. So basically, COLA was 13%. And then a new thing that I learned was that minimum wage is going up because inflation's over 7%, so that's a new one. So we had to adjust all of our pay schedules based off of that. And so we'll be looking at those later. And a few of them, there was just a little clerical mistake, not flagging on to you guys. So we'll revisit those, but minimum wage went up 50 cents. One of the big things is, is that Susan, because we are gonna look at some of the schedules, the pay schedules, she tried to narrow them off at Chico Unified and the one that we approved, the classified goes up faster in the first five years and then it slows down after that. So it goes 5% to 3%. We felt, yeah, we thought that was typical and that was great to kind of retain employees and help it turn over and give them incentives for the next year as the first five years, you know, get as many benefits, so that's nice that you go thicker. We approved that second class. Susan had actually given us two options and we chose that option, so that's one you guys are gonna look at tonight. Contracts, there's a really exciting one with Riley that we approved that you guys are gonna look at today and also counseling. So I've got some extra notes on that, but I'll just wait because I'm sure Susan wants to cover those. I think I should see those in black and white. So those are the main things we went over. And yeah, I have calculations on what that's gonna cost us over the year, too. So if anyone has questions about that, I'd be ready.
I do.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Does anybody have any questions for Amber on the finance committee report? And like she said, we'll dig, we'll dig more into the individual items as they. That takes us to Tricia with the parent council report.
And there was no meeting. We had our booth at registration day, so Amber was there working and Amber was there working.
I do first.
Yeah, yeah. And so they were pushing parent council, so, so that's good. They had a little, they had their little board and photos and stuff. Hopefully we'll get some good people.
All right. Great, thanks, Tricia. Does anybody have any questions for Tricia?
Just a little bit of the politics of parent council. Anybody who was already, whatever they were last year, do they have to re-vote each time?
Okay, yeah, every year, yeah.
Okay.
Then the class kind of, I've never seen it actually come to a little, usually parents are usually pretty poor.
Seriously, whoever belongs here is first.
Yes, yes, yes.
We had about one year.
Did you?
It was in one of the lower grades.
Yeah. When people are still ambitious.
No, I mean, like the treasurer or Amber does notes, the notes position.
The chair.
Yeah.
The treasurer. Usually we don't have more than one person stepping up that wanting to do it.
Yeah, that's true.
I guess if there was.
Is the bylaws, is that an annual, do you know?
I feel like it's annual.
Pretty sure.
I feel like every year we really talk about it, so.
Anybody stepping up this?
Yeah. I think they tried to do bylaws and then not a lot of people.
They tried to do a bylaw meeting to you and nobody showed up really, that's why people, I think.
Probably have more participants.
Yes, yeah.
But I do know that it was maybe like five reps they needed for classes. That's not about right, maybe a few more. I mean kindergarten always. Kinder always, yeah, certainly, but yeah. And I think.
There's a good amount.
Good amount of classes that need to be dealt, so just as an FYI, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know when the class meetings are, so that's always the challenge, like the first meeting, you usually don't have your reps.
And teachers will address that.
Yeah, so it's like having those class meetings and educating the parents to, you need a rep.
All right, well, thank you for that. And that takes us into item 4.3, policy review.
Which I don't have any for this one. We have some later, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh. Yes, so. There are no policies on 4.3 policy review, so we will not be reviewing them. So we'll go into 4.4, the COVID-19 response update.
We. We've been, no kid, we got through summer school without any cases affecting the school. You know, we are still, we are having cases pop up, obviously. You know, Sarah was just talking about her situation. So expecting that it will continue to be something that we have to track. The, the CDC and the state are both continuing to reduce the expectations of time that you isolate and so forth. Or, and mask wearing is totally an optional item still. They don't look at, look to the, to be planning to change that at all. I think the measure is, are the hospitals full? And if the hospitals aren't full, you know, that we're at that point. They are, of course, encouraging children now to be vaccinated. They're next, but it is not required, so we're happy about that.
And the current, for the school policy is like the five days at home?
Yes.
Still last thing.
It's, nothing changed of itself.
And, and sorry, just reiterate that. So like, there was someone that was in first grade. It's not that there will be a quarantine for the whole class, it's just trying to find out the child and then that person quarantining.
Yeah, that person quarantined and then we have, inform the families and they can make that decision.
To test or?
Yeah, to do that. Testing regularly is not a requirement anymore. It's changed. That weekly test for those who are vaccinated is no longer. And we no longer have current stash of current tests. We had a big boxes and they all expired over the summer, so. Yeah, we, so we do not have free tests to give out.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, they're all.
So those were like the government that gave out to all of us expired, really?
Yeah, they expired like May, June. Whoa.
Yeah, we made it through. That's what Kayla said to me. Well, we knew they would last through the school year, but they wouldn't be any good.
They're already giving away.
Right.
Take them, get them off our shelves, you can throw them away. Yeah, so.
Yes.
But it sounds like we're moving forward slowly and. Oh, hi, Vicky, yes, please.
Well, I'm just wondering are there gonna be tests available? Did I miss that? If these are expired, are there more coming or what?
No.
Okay, okay.
They're eliminating the requirement for testing, so therefore they're not, that's the reason, I guess, for not sending us any more tests.
All right, all right, I missed that. Thank you.
There are the things where you have to come back to school with the negative test.
Yeah, Kayla was like.
Before it was.
Say you didn't have one, sorry.
Well, I'm saying for Chico Unified before, it was you could come back early if you had approved the negative test. You could come back before the end of the quarantine, but that, but now they've shortened the quarantine period and eliminated that requirement.
So that must have happened, right?
Yeah, you'd already tested positive, you'd come back sooner with the negative test, like it's less than just quarantine.
Got it.
And I will be very honest with you, I don't really answer those questions. I asked Kayla. Because the changes have happened so rapidly. I'm just saying, okay, Kayla's the one and Natalie are the ones that are on top of that on a daily basis. And meeting with other nurses and all that, so I just go ask her. So if you have that question, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the COVID-19 response? None. Take us into 4.5, pay scale updates, or 4.5.1 at least, classified increase.
No.
No. Oh.
We're doing classified, we're not doing certified.
Okay, so as Amber spoke to earlier, the reason for the minimum wage increase.
With 7% inflation. So that's a new goal. But basically, if it's over 7%, and so that was news to me, so the minimum wage goes up. So, yeah.
So it's required to go into effect by January 1st, 2020. So we do have, like for the other scales, we do have some time to figure it out before we're legally required to.
So we're approving this or we're just letting this?
You're approving.
So this is proposal number two. This is the one that the finance committee recommended, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And one thing to keep in mind with the classified, because I was just thinking this was like, you know, health aides and teacher aides, but it really actually goes up to like your, you know, behavioral health support, counselors. Anybody that's not a teacher, basically, yeah, and then administrator, yeah. So that involved me right away. But just because when you're looking at like the higher years, you know, you're not getting up there, but.
But, or like when you look at, you know, step, or, yeah.
Right, right.
Column 19, row 19, step 20, you're like, wow, that's a lot for you.
Yeah, this.
Yeah.
But it's not a lot for a school counselor.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's the range classification table that's below.
So this isn't like, we talked about the minimum wage necessarily, but just the minimum wage, this is more just the increase overall for the classified salaries.
So, well, so instead of just bumping the bottom one.
Roll it back up, so she can see the first one.
There's only, you know, step.
Step one is now starts at 15, 15.
So then we had to bump every.
Yeah, right, right.
Is it going to 16 in January then?
No, it's going to 15, 15 in January. We're just getting it, taking care of it before January 10th.
Yeah.
And we can wait and implement it then if that's a wish of yours. However, right now, Chico Unified has just up theirs to the 15, 15. They actually, you have to know what you're reading when you read theirs, but they've up to everybody to 15, 15 as it was last month, so.
Yeah.
When I'm trying to get eight in here and they're like.
We're competing.
No, we, we agree to that. In finance, we thought it was better to do it now.
And I do appreciate that with the minimum wage increase that it was assessed throughout the entire pay scale. Right, that, because that's something I've seen in the past, not here, I know. Where everybody else just gets closer to the minimum wage, minimum wage goes up and nobody else does.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm really glad to see that this is being addressed across the week.
Yeah, and this is the one where they do go up a little bit quicker, like 5% as opposed to 3% in the first five years. But like, these are, you know, some of these positions are hard to hire for, hard to keep people, so an extra little incentive to stay another year and another year is a good thing.
So if this is one, it looks like for the first five years, they get an increase and then, as you said, it reduces the percentage they go up. But year six through 10, they don't go up at all. Right, and 11 and 12, they don't go up at all.
That's, so this, we were always, we, we had a first through 10, a raise, a smaller raise for the first 10 years and then 11 and 12, we dropped it. And so to match Chico Unified, we eliminated the six, seven, eight, and nine and just put five. We still are, we'll end up with people being a little higher.
Yeah.
Because they have, they don't do the 11 and 12. So we could, you know, pull that one out to be exactly like.
No, and I like that, then there's, you know, some bumps in there, because I think it's hard to diagnose for too long.
It's a long time not to get.
I know, yeah.
It's a lot, long time. And of course, we often, you know, as the things like this happen, we'll have a new minimum wage change again in some period in the future, so they'll always get that.
Process for inflation and that's for moving down. Except your six through 10s right now.
Yeah, you're like, yeah. They will get more. If they're like at year six right now, they'll end up getting more than they would have up to the other pay scale. So I, if, you know, the person that's nine, at nine won't get very much more, but you know.
Okay. But then they'll still roll over.
They still, yeah.
So what is the fiscal impact of this pay scale?
So, so overall, it's gonna be 3.33%. So that's increased and that's going to include the other pay scales too, right there. So we look at it all, so it's gonna be about 3.3.
That's what the taxes increases.
And how does our, how's our budget looking to absorb that?
Well, it's looking good because we got, yeah, an extra, you know. We're gonna have it. So there is some unknowns there, right? I mean, we're still kind of waiting, we're not really sure when we're getting the money. Like, there's a little bit of that in there, which, you know, Jim says it looks good, it looks like we're going to be fine, but we just don't.
The government.
Still, exactly. So, yeah.
And then how are we looking like with insurance costs? I imagine those will also see increases. And do we have any information on what the outlook on that's gonna be?
I don't have that right now.
I wasn't sure if we'd heard that, and it's still pretty early on to know, but.
We are going to probably save in some other places too, based on some contracts that you see coming. I don't know those exact numbers. Sure, we can probably get them, but we need to look down one, specifically one of the contracts. So we're gonna do, probably gonna save some of them on too, so that's helpful, but.
That's good. I just always like to make sure that we're still looking to, you know, for the out years on the pay skills because unlike shorter-term contracts, this is effects beyond this year.
Yeah.
True, to make sure we're, we're looking at, at that. Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the proposed classified pay scale increase? Righty. None. I will.
You're ready to motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new classified hourly rate schedule.
All right, thank you, Tricia, for the motion. Your second, select a second. All right, thank you, Leanna, with the second. I will call for the vote. Kristen?
Hi.
Amber?
Hi.
Vicky?
Hi.
Hi.
Leanna?
Hi.
And Chelsea, hi. All right, that brings us then to 4.6.2.
Yes, so Riley is also here to answer, talk to this, this point. I reached out to her a couple of weeks ago, looking at some of the projects that are currently on my plates or the schools' plate and trying to be realistic with the change that's happening with special education, the investment of time in building and just all of that that I'm doing and thinking that I could use some help in some of the project planning. And I turned to Riley because she, though she's left us, she's still very connected, Waldorf trained, certificate. Yeah, okay, so I'll just finish telling you how one of the chairs, you already know it. But, and you know, things like planning and surveys, she's very good at. In 2019, we had WOW Camp, if you remember that, which she developed and planned and ran and it was excellent and paid for itself. And of course, we were not able to do that in 20 or 21 or 20, in 22, well, probably could have, but it was not.
One more thing.
It was just one more thing.
Yeah.
So having that background that she has in that sort of work, I reached out to her for her help and she has been positive about sharing her abilities with us and helping us. So, so we, she and I sat down and worked through this. The expanded learning program is that program plan for nine hours a day so we could help families that need the additional help and students. And so it's expanded learning, the board and the school's desire to have more activities for middle schoolers would be included that. The discussion about what do we do on Thursdays? Can we help families stay till 3:15 on Thursdays? All those things can be folded into that expanded learning grant. The, the grant is intended to support low-income families and then we would also need to figure some sort of pay scale for families that, that are not low-income. And so that's all of the things that I'm asking Riley to help us with. The preschool program, we've already done quite a bit of work on it, but it still needs to be finalized. My main concern is the, to checking the economic viability of the program. So that's something she'll have a lot of resources already, but can finish. And then we were. we were asked to look at and assess the viability of opening a second site in the Oroville area. Oroville only has one charter school. And so we were asked to do that, and that's kind of a big deal. So doing that and finding out if the, if it's viable, if there's enough people in Oroville that would be interested to start a school and how to staff it. That's a lot. There's a lot of questions.
Sure.
So having her take a look at all that information, lots of, lots of resources to do, to know how to do that, you know, with the charter school world, but it's a big time commitment. And so asking her to work on that. And then the final project is helping us with some work on the charter renewal and stuff as far as some of the reviewing the documents, reviewing our goals, vision, you know, figuring out the message that we need to give to Chico Unified. There's been a fifteen oh five pass. It's a very different world right now. So to get some help with that, that's the end of the year, but the other three are for the full year. So, you know, the hope is, the desire is to finish that work most of the first three projects by the end of January. So as we roll into the next year, those are ready to go, and we can say to families, yes, we're going to have a extended learning program for this year. So. So we are asking, we talked about this in finance, and asking for your approval to move forward.
And then so a couple of things we discussed with Riley, like would she, if some other projects came up, would she be willing to take those on? She seems open to that. And also she was going to log her hours. So it was going to be very, it's going to be easy to track, just based off of, you know, where we're at with the projects, and then also she has no longer hours. And then so twenty hours a week would be what it is, which is seven hundred dollars a week, which is twenty hundred dollars a month. That's if she does all twenty hours. And then also for the year, are they stopped at thirty? That's probably right. So that's like twenty six thousand, six hundred a year. So.
However, the thing I didn't think of her intent is to finish most of the work by the end of January.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So potentially. Potentially have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And realistically, much of this work is work that previously would have been split between a director and an assistant director or education director or varying titles of the position held by another director, which is at a very different pay rate. So I think this is quite fair and would be fortunate to have, in my opinion, Riley willing to do this, because I think we've seen many circumstances for her to be able to really lay out, make, and execute it. So I'm getting excited.
And then also a lot of these projects would be funded already, you know, their grants, their funded grants. So what she's working on is going to add value because we're going to be able to offer more services to the students. So that's huge to, I literally wrote down, add value. So, and you know, if we bring on the school might not right away, but eventually, you know, it'd be nice if we brought on a charter school in Oroville, we'd be able to share, you know, like our specialty teachers, things like that. So.
Share with our own schools and other schools.
Yeah.
Nurse.
So, yeah, a lot of extra benefit there.
Yeah.
Riley, do you want to, can you put Riley up so I can?
I would love to hear from you, Riley, and your thoughts.
Hi, all. Good to be back. Um, I'm really excited that Susan had reached out to me to discuss this, these projects. Again, I shared in the finance committee, if there are other projects that need support, I'm willing to help with that. So keep me updated. I'm, I'm ready to dig in. But I can answer any questions you may have.
Riley, are you still local? Not to get too personal, but just from an accessibility point. Are you still fairly? Okay.
Yes, I'm local, so I do plan on, especially with the new school site development, uh, planning. I plan on being in person and taking surveys and facilitating community discussions, et cetera.
Great, thank you. Sarah, I see you have your hand raised.
Um, hi Riley. Um, I just wanted to say I do have some information from the MTSS conference about extended learning opportunity programs. So I don't know if you're going to have a Blue Oak email or a personal email, but I can forward all that to you. It's not a lot, but it's some.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I believe Susan and I discussed opening my email possibly since some of the planning documents, like the preschool program, were connected to that email. So that, that might open up. Depending how things go.
I think that's super exciting. So, thank you. And then, oh, no payroll taxes. Yeah, so.
So from a cost perspective to us, it is what the actual, or now just not this. Please.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, excellent. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Riley or for Amber or Susan on this matter? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed contract. If somebody would like to know. I'll make the motion to approve Riley's contract. Excellent. Thank you, Leanna, for the motion. Do you have a second? Oh, I see.
Second.
I see Vicki with the second. Excellent. Okay. And then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Kristin.
Hi.
Amber.
Hi.
Vicki.
Hi.
Kristin.
Hi.
Leanna.
Hi.
And Chelsea.
Hi.
Welcome back, Riley.
Yay. Thank you.
Right. Takes us to four point six point three.
Okay, this is another one of our great staff members that is coming back to us. Emma is leading a group of counselors now, trained. And has four, working in her team. And so she's doing an independent contract situation. She and I talked about a focused need on, really on the students' needs. So making sure that students are getting the referrals they need, getting the direct services they need. So she has offered us sixteen hours a week for that service. In talking to her, you know, the excitement of having a variety of people, male and female, available as counselors, so that, that needs of the students can be more directly, that, those relations, there's some options in their relationships. For example, they can do the work onsite or online, depending on what might work best for the student. And just a lot of flexibility and strength in that team. Laura, who was a past board member that some of you know, is one of the people that's in the team. So that, that was exciting for me as well.
Okay. So just for my own clarification, this contract isn't directly with her as an individual, but with her.
Her team.
Company or, yeah, including her team members. That's great.
It's Emma, Emma Todd, it's Todd Council.
Yes, I saw that. And so, and that's what I was thinking as I was looking through. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. And then I guess the other question I had, which I expected in the answer, but we would have all of her staff then that would be working with any of our students would go through our life scan process.
Anyone who's on site with kids would get her through that process.
And so from what I understand, it'll go through the same referral process. So if a student gets referred, then they can team up with a counselor. The counselors, we did talk, we, yeah, we talked a lot about this in the finance. They will be available, she also will be available to meet the teachers. So regarding the student. And so sixteen hours a week, there was one of the members in our finance community that's a teacher that was a little worried that that might not be enough. But we looked at it on a five day week, and that's three and a half hours a day. So normally they wouldn't be here five days a week, right? I don't know if they'll have availability on the weekend, but just basing it off that, we would normal, normally have that. Yeah, so three, so if you do it in a five day week, that's three and a half hours a day. So, you know, to me, I thought that seems pretty reasonable, reasonable. And sixty-five dollars an hour, so that's potentially, if we build for that many hours, it's a thousand forty a week. And so based off of thirty-eight weeks, that's actually thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight a year. So under forty thousand dollars for counseling services. So.
And before we had the what, we had a full-time personnel staffer, or were we sharing?
We had a full-time person on staff.
Yeah.
Previous, last year we had a full-time person. Previously, we've had twenty-four hours a week.
And this is, this is no, sorry, this is no payroll taxes either.
Yeah.
Just a contractor. And, and then the students have to be available. There are four different counselors. And they'll be able to do, and like she said, if they want to, they might as well do that, but they are available to come to site.
That's a, that's what I was going to ask. So this is sixteen hours of running between four people essentially.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Might assign one to our school. Just, I was just thinking about like, and, you know, past counseling or whatever is having someone new all the time, something like behavioral health in the county I see with clients. It doesn't work when you're constantly getting someone new, let's say, if they have an issue. And so that's the only interesting thing to see in the contract, that how often that would change, or if they could be assigned by grade at least.
The discussion that we had was more based on quality of relationship. So for example, she talked about one, who's a very logical, kind of, this is how things are person. When they assess what student might be served by that kind of a thought process, whereas somebody else is all about, you know, how's your body feel? You know, do you need, you know, where are you feeling your stress? Yeah, so she, that's what she really talked about, the fact that they have a variety of styles, and they would assign based on that, not based on who's available to come to school. So the relationship piece was something we discussed, and I will take that back to her that you brought that up as a concern, but.
And so they're not even essentially on site. It's once the referrals come in, then an assessment will be set up, a first consultation, but definitely on, onsite, because I know, only because I work with in behavioral health is everybody's going to health a lot. And so that Zoom piece just kind of worries me a little bit with children and just our Waldorf way that, that in the contract, well, we could, we said Zoom, so how, I want to make sure it's that one.
We, she, she wasn't as interested in, I, I was, because we do have some, especially middle schoolers.
Okay.
Who seem to have been more comfortable with the screen to start that relationship. It was like it was safe. It wasn't as personal. They didn't feel close in a row. At least over the last year, I've seen some of that. So we just talked about that could be an option if it seemed appropriate for, once we discuss it as a team, if it seemed appropriate. But the first desire is on.
And it so, it sounds like more like a certain counselor would be assigned to a certain child, and they would be building that relationship. It's not like somebody new is coming in every.
No, it wouldn't be that, that counselor with that child. And I was, I assume she'll probably have one of the counselors be our primary person and then say, oh, this other student might be better served by this counselor. Let's see.
It's still the only other person on site is Amber.
Amber is the, yeah, she's the, the person to speak to, you know.
No, because we did have both onsite before. So that's what I'm just thinking. And then from there, with for all, what, how long that would look like for the child. I was thinking of the parents to just turn around, you know, and stuff.
Yeah, it's, well, you know, the industry, it's hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we, we do make sure that emergency situations where kids are really needing, you know, or dealing with suicideation or, you know, whatever is going on in the home, but they need somebody to talk to, make sure those things get addressed at least once. I mean, the N S S and do the referrals. And that's been my biggest concern for me, as we have kiddos that really need to talk to somebody, and getting them a quality referral. And you know what? Was Janice, who was here when I, before the fire, was here when I first got here, really knew the population of counselors in the community. So she would meet with somebody and say, here, you need to go talk to this person. And so that understanding of what the strengths in the community are with a, a multi, a multiple team, being able to, to think, who is it that that child is most likely to get along with?
Right.
To be able to do that process, I think, is, is part. Because often when we say, oh, we need counseling, and they do a referral, and then it's like, oh, we didn't like that one. We're looking for another one, you know, that whole process and trying to really make that connection work. It's different counselors.
True, true.
So that is part of my hope.
Piece.
Yeah. Yeah.
So will the hours for the counselor be on demand only, or will there be some office hours where if a student wanted to walk in to meet with a counselor, that there would actually be a counselor onsite?
Wouldn't have a counselor at site for that.
Okay.
That drop in. Part of working on the process of the counseling over the past five years is the high demand on the counselor and emotional toll that it can take. So I spent some time talking to some counseling, you know, some experienced counselors and saying, you know, what's going on? Because it seems like, you know, my counselors are breaking out. And twenty hours a week is in the profession is considered a full-time, twenty hours a week with children. Of course, there's always the additional work. It's, it's considered full-time. And so when we have somebody onsite thirty-five hours a week, they are pretty much putting in twice what the emotional strength of an individual in counseling can take. So sixteen hours a week felt like a good, no, I mean, she started at eight, I got her up to sixty, so I'm happy with that. So it felt like a good amount of time. And if we're seeing like, you know, Amber does do talks with kids a lot, and we can figure out if there's a, a need to go further than just a talk. The counselors were doing some of that. We also had, the counselor was doing that, some of that, and thinking I also want to make sure that I keep my counseling staff strong and cared for as well, and not getting them to the point of, you know, crying when they go home.
Sure, sure.
And so I'm, so I'm trying to.
Same vein. My concern, I guess, is shifting than the counselor's role, that we did have a thirty-five hour a week onsite counselor available to Amber, who is very talented, but she's not a counselor and already has a full-time job here. So.
So we only had a.
Burnout.
Yeah, we only had a full-time counselor onsite for three months, four months, ever.
But before was, then thirty-five hours?
Before thirty-five, no, it was twenty-four hours.
Right. I just, I.
It was what we had.
With twenty hours, I'm just not. One of those roles. So what about things that, because I know previously the counselors were doing, for the counselor or counselors, if you rewind back several years. Were doing some different, like, in the classroom kind of group type things. Will, will some of these?
Um, they could be, but I'm focusing on the needs of, the immediate needs of the students first, because we've been without a counselor since last December. So getting that to happen first and then move on to that. And also.
The wellness room too.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah. I'm, I mean, you know, this is part of the reality of the world. There's, there are not counselors available.
Sure.
And so part of it is the reality of the world we live in and making sure we're taking care of those emergency situations for students. It may not be as what we want, but at least it's
Right.
not negligent. So that's sort of where we are right now. And looking back for me, this is kind of a, how we were in the school kind of thing, concern that the counselor was getting a lot. And I go back to Janice, who I first, you know, the. And I go back to Genesee, who I first, you know, the other counselors have been there. And that they were given and taking on roles that were beyond really that main focus, taking care of children. And so, um, you know, I've seen staff members sit for an hour through tens a week to talk to one of the camp, campfire counselors. For example, I'm thinking, that's not what it's here for. Um, you know, then I'm, so that sense of, are we really making sure we're focusing on the children first? Like, getting that, the community to get that, to realize that's what they're here for. Um, and not, yeah, not for me, you know, I mean, so. So, just kind of working and talking to co-chairs and faculty and like, how are we using the counselor? In a way that is the most effective for the school. And um, it's really easy to take a counselor who's good at um, things like, like doing. Restorative practices, and suddenly she's doing eight classes of restorative practices, and she doesn't have. Anyone-on-one time. So, so also just getting, yes, we need those things. But our biggest need is to serve the, the students directly. And so trying to get us to that, and then we can talk about those other things. And maybe it's something that Emma's group does, but there's a separation between what we're doing. For kids and what we're doing for classrooms. And so we're not. Having what we're doing for classrooms push out. The individual students.
So, so that makes sense, and I'll probably be really clear in her contract too, then, that it'll be billable only for one-on-one services with the family and child.
Right.
Okay, and that's, um, for sure sixteen hours, like, so, since it's like a ten ninety-nine or contract. If they don't use those sixteen hours a week, because they didn't get any referrals.
We don't pay, it's not, yeah, we don't pay.
And let's say, you know, they get a referral from the team after with Amber. Um, in the contract, it will be stipulated how, how long, like, is it gonna take till next Monday, is it gonna take two? So imagine they also contract somewhere else, they have hours with private clients. So again, like, what's gonna be her response or protocol to, to Amber's email that gets sent out from the team? It's just a little bit of concern since they're not on site, like she was bringing up, but.
Yeah, you know.
I'm sure that'll be in the contract.
Yeah, it is. It will, it'll be something we'll agree on else, you know, this is what the process needs to be. And that, we've talked about establishing the process. Are we gonna screen, is it always through Amber? Is it for me? Are we gonna do a screening also of referrals? Is there, is this, is this where it should go? And what's the connection with the teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there are some details like that to work out.
And for to ease your concern, can we use some of the notes? Things that, that got maybe untouched from this, but not having it since December. That we could right away, since we're gonna have sixteen hours, where you could start. That, instead of putting that on Amber, we already know that there was like a referral they could have.
I, as soon as I tell teachers.
Yeah.
You know, that's the thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They already have, they already know, and they probably have also been in contact with the families over the summer and some know what the situation is now. I, if I said write a referral to Emma, she would have twenty probably, um, right now. I haven't opened that door yet, because we want to make sure.
Right, right, right.
That process, but, um, yeah.
Will there be?
I just see your genuine concern, and that's nice, thanks.
Yeah, I, you know, and I, I get, I just, yeah, I, I need us to be able to use the counseling service. Or focus on kids first, their success, and then differentiate. And that, and again, that's historical. When I came with Genesee, there was kids, and then there was classroom time, and there was, you know. Foster youth, and, you know, and we just really have stretched that position, so I want to make it sustainable. And so that those people want to come to work every day like Christmas.
Will there be a way, uh, for students to self-refer? And I'm thinking especially at the middle school ages, if we talk about technology. Um, I know at some of the other middle schools, like, the students can go in on their Chromebook and actually request time with their counselor. And then it's, an appointment is set, so it's not a walk-in, but it's still, like, they can self-refer. Versus having to.
Somebody else.
Yes, versus having to tell one person that they need help from another person. Um, is there potential for something like that? Because I know that's been super, super beneficial.
It's a very good idea. I think the first step is to get the initial setup going. And then after that's going, the student, once we've built that relationship, then the student to be able to contact their counselor directly. We, and we do have a confidential Dropbox, so somebody can. It's mainly set up for addressing conflict and bullying, things like that. But we have used it for counseling before. They'll also use that for counseling, like. They put something in there, in a, a note to, they want to talk to somebody, that's treated confidential too. So, for those who've never accessed it before, that would be something they could do.
So it kind of sounds like they'll be, based on this contract, probably some policies put in place on how referrals work for students. For teachers and procedures and how that works.
Yeah.
If there's an emergency situation, will we be able to get somebody right away? I would assume, because I would assume they have to fill their other clients that way, and they want the hours. Um, and then also possibly down the line, maybe they can develop some programs that are for the classrooms. Because I know that is probably what you were referring to. A lot of other schools have that, where the counselors come in and they do like a class lesson. Whether it be something different based on each group of things like that.
What I was referring to more was like, I know at other schools, no schools, like specifically, students can actually.
Yes.
Go on the website of the school and request time with their counselor without having to tell. I think especially at a, a small school, um, like this one, it can be really. Yeah, if you have a reason, like, you know, when I say you, I mean, like, a middle schooler, which rational thought is not always. I own two middle schoolers inside, we're in the throes, but I'm just thinking that, um. Having access to reach out to a counselor if it's a situation that they don't feel like they can bring to. Their teacher or a staff member, because of whatever the circumstances may be. You know, especially because in a small community like this, there are friendships between students' parents and staff members. I mean, that's something we work really hard to build. Um, but if you have a student who, you know. I think that could be a beneficial thing to have.
I just have one question for, I think what Amber was referring to. I remember from, um, the fifth or sixth grade, there was like a Wednesday that someone was going in. Was that Amber or was that the previous counselor? They were going into the classroom and they would have.
Yeah, it was a previous.
Oh, was the counselor, okay. So say, that could be something that Amber could continue to those, and she.
Or even just like support from the other counselors, giving her, like, this, some age-appropriate lessons.
That's what I thought you were referring to, yeah.
So, what I'll say at this point is, I'm still working on increasing services. I'm not like, oh, this is enough.
Right.
Um, but it definitely gives us that, um, access to that knowledge and ability. And without the, um, you know. And, and someone else who has resources, that's not being able to find onsite counseling. So, it's that, and, and my thought still is, you know, um. If we're gonna leave that job out there. And if we find that person, then adjusting this, maybe to do more. Because Emma's strength, has a strength in restorative practices and things. So, we might end up continuing to, to get her into the classrooms and do those trains also. So, it's, um, you know, the counseling, the mental health needs is a big. Um, item on the plate of the state and with funding, so that funding appears to. That additional funding that gave us appears to be continuing, because they're saying this is still an issue. Very grateful for the legislature and the governor and that. And, um, you know, so if we find that person. Then that will be someone we'll work with and work together with the Todd counselor. And possibly change the emphasis of that.
So we are continually to look for a, a higher.
Yes, we are, we have not taken that gap, so.
That's good. So this is just, this. And let me. Through June twenty twenty-three, but it would be, if for a reason we found another higher.
Right, we think, we can give notice or we can change the, um, term. So, like, right now, it focuses on those direct services. If we decided that we had someone now that could do the direct services, then M B A on campus. Then this might move into that, um, more of a consultation, working with teachers. That community development and so forth, if necessary.
But she was.
Yes, she's very good at that, so.
Her whole plan she presented.
It's, yeah, her plans are beautiful, just too much, yeah.
Thank you for answering.
I love to. Sure.
Yeah, so I think it's clear that it's not only a concern of the governor, but. All of us and you and your staff as well to provide the best support.
Let me add one more.
Please.
I will add that, uh, to a reminder that Emma attended Waldorf School's K twelve. So, when, that was one of the things, when she first became connected, they, she immediately had the language to talk to the teacher. So it was no, like, it was just like, they were using the same language, they were on the same page. And so, keeping her engaged with the school is something that I, I think is helpful to the communities as well.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this topic? Being then, I will enter into motion to approve Emma's contract.
This is Tricia, I'll make a motion to approve Todd consulting contract.
Thank you, Tricia. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Right, thank you, Kristen, for the second. For the vote, Leanna. Tricia?
I.
Vicky?
Hi.
One of the so parents. Amber? Kristen?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
Oh. So, do I hire?
She's right on the side.
Okay. Oh, on the staff of Todd.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, okay. I hired somebody and one more, oh my gosh. So you're abstaining?
Yes.
Glad you checked out.
Four, so that'll bring us to four point seven point one. Chronic absence and truth, please, second reading.
Sorry.
S L P is a speech event.
Absence and truth. This is the second reading, so we will be able to enter into motion to pass this tonight. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Is this, um, this will be updated in our parent handbook?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Do you, are parents aware of when there's changes? Like, you know, if your parent's been here forever, he might be like, I need to read the handbook. I mean, I'm not speaking of myself.
No, it's true, parent council, I said something like, I've been here three years. And I recognized him, and I was like, well, still, he might want to just.
Yeah.
And so, yeah.
You've been here for years, you should consider joining.
Yeah.
They might not ever read it, but just some parents, if they know there's some changes, might peruse.
On the acorn word, yes.
So officially with the parent handbook, you're required as a parent to sign a form that you've read. So if it's, if, so it is, it's there, so from a legal standpoint, yes, they are notified.
Okay, cool.
Um, also, you know, as far as my, my plan over the next few weeks. Once Kelly Chandler's back, um, full-time, back to her job. Is to go through those that have had chronic attendance issues over the past year and write them a very nice letter. Saying, you've been struggling, and let us help you. And also, if you can't solve this, we may. So that, so that's the thing, the other major change this year is, um, the. The dress code, clothing descriptions, which we went through with, with some of the middle schoolers. I don't think they're happy, because it actually got worse.
Yeah.
But it, yeah, like, yeah, so you actually now have some of the tells you you have to cover.
Mind about that one, kids.
So they're, you know, so I'm not sure, it was a good discussion, but when it came right down to the end, they learned the reasons why. Things were the way they were, and so it didn't change the way they were. But, that's okay, that's part of the learning experience. So that would be the other thing that, um, just focus on.
Great, and I love, I love that, um, it'll be specifically reaching out to individual. Families that really, that they.
Are, are struggling with this, we will directly reach out to them, so.
There's some of the comment, and I don't know if that, but the parent square, have you met with their teachers? But, in the parents' square is, um, forward, but soft about absences and truancy. And how important it is for us to the classroom and participation, and I just really appreciate that. I think that the teachers can have a soft way of saying that too, in a sense of just those reminders. And, so I don't know if that was also you, if you, if that went to all of them already, but I just really appreciated seeing that too. And that gentle, but the message was there too, so it's nice to see that.
Right, does anybody else have any questions or comments about the running absence and truancy policy? And with that, I will enter into motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the chronic absence and truancy.
Thank you, Kristen, can you motion, do I have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Leanna, with the second. We'll call to the vote, Leanna?
I.
Tricia?
I.
Vicky?
I.
Amber?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Chelsea?
I.
Okay, that takes us four point seven point two as table, takes us to four point eight, the O C C member transition. With four point four point one, review board seat terms.
So, we have, um, this is an annual change, um, that we go through and make sure. We have elected members before, um, and so we have two members. This is, that are actually, um, up for reelection if they're interested. One, Vicky, for community member, and Tricia for, um, a parent member. Um, we are required to put out that this is available and see if anyone else is interested in the positions. Um, and so that's what we want to go over for the next month. So, the process for that, we need somebody who's not up for reelection, who is on the board to oversee that. Mainly what that means is when we count the election, count the votes, you'll be present and be able to say, yes, I saw. Certified, basically, that's what that is. And, um. Yeah.
Great.
I just need one board member.
Okay.
Staff, staff does the counting and, and the board member. It sits in the room and watches it. Um, so, and then, um. Vicky and Tricia, you need to put your name in and say, yes, you're interested in running again.
Yes, I'm interested in running again.
So, she's interested, so I appreciate that. Um, and then we'll put out to others, you do not have to re.
Submit everything.
Submit everything, we can pull up what you've submitted before, unless you want to.
Yeah, no, my issue is up there, is that I am currently. Yeah, no, my issue is up there is that I am currently becoming a community member and Kristen, who's listed as community member, is actually a parent member state.
I looked at my today and noticed.
Yeah, I was like, oh.
Good. I thought that was, yeah.
Did you catch that? We haven't fixed, haven't fixed the Chelsea thing.
And I can switch your terms, just like, do a little copy paste there. I think my term is still up in August of twenty twenty three. Yeah, that's what I mean, I can switch, like, I can make your term still, okay.
Yeah.
I'm like, the right thing.
We won't change, we'll just change that you're a community member, as not a parent and a community member.
And Kristen is a parent member, not a.
Yeah. And I, Alex, I was. Stay.
I was just gonna say.
I was like.
Vicky and Trisha were strongly and highly encouraged to run again. You're both such valuable board members.
I was, Tricia, you're.
Me too.
Right?
No.
The rep for.
Okay.
So say, can you use beyond votes? That's what I thought, I was like, wait.
No.
She's always there.
No, I am always.
With the rep.
I get to participate.
She reports to us.
God.
Representing here, got it, got it.
Except for you, actually, are on the council, she's in the finance committee, she's, she's.
I still get to have here all the. Yeah. No, but I'm on the finance committee.
Exactly.
Right. Does this change? I'm sorry, but it's like, it just says looking at it, or did something change? Sorry if I missed that.
She. Alex has done a very good job of making it clear and understandable. So yes, it has changed, but not in context, just in like. Look at it, go, oh, that's what's going on.
Considering having a list of people.
Got it.
Yeah.
They are very nicely staggered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's.
Okay.
That's.
Which is very important.
Oh, I know, when I first started, everybody was like brand new, except for you.
This is.
I put your winner all lost.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's, and then.
Combination of the two.
So the other thing that we will do at our next meeting, when we have a meeting, is establish again the officers. So that's also the next step. Once those, those two positions are, we are voted for and filled, then we will establish officers. And then the, who wants to be on the finance committee or.
Yeah.
And, and you know, the other committee that's going to be important this year is the building committee, facilities. So just a reminder that that's coming back, that's back. No, I'm just on that, that's just a little.
The facilities committee, we, we shut down and had it kind of incorporated with the finance committee, because when you're not actively pursuing a facility, it's more just like the day on day.
Yes. To the buildings, like the building, not like building.
So, and, and I will say also, it's, I think Buck, for his work every day, because part of the facilities committee was trying to figure out how to get what Buck now does without us even having to get a report.
Yeah.
So before Buck, we had a facilities committee, we sit around and talk about how we're going to repair it. And so now.
And now Buck just repairs.
So it's.
Nice.
This happened.
So this happened, yeah. And so the restructuring of, of the administration helped us not really need that facilities committee.
So is there a point where we need to send this out, wait a certain period of time for people to say if they want to run? Because if our terms are up in August, can we still do stuff in September? Like, if our term is up, like as, like how fast, like, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, because it's August.
I know.
If I remember last year, I think this is how we did it, we did the month of, like basically the month in between our meetings was the election cycle. We collected the applications and then we had a deadline before the agenda went out about the votes. And then we put the applicants or, I don't think we had a vote last year, but we put the applicant on the agenda for you to approve. And then right after that, the meeting started with a new map lives.
But the years previous, because it was like middle of the year, I feel like you were doing the voting.
We have, we used to do it in May, and I put that on something for Alice and I to talk about.
We changed that because of the budget, because then what happened is the brand new board members came in.
Were lost.
They came in on the meeting, we were approving a budget that they had never seen. And, and several years back in history, before our current administration was in place, that also was a really way to. Easy way for things to get overlooked or missed in the process. And, and so it really opened the doors for a lot of trust me.
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't want to operate that way, so it made sense to shift the date.
We, we could still do the election in the spring though, and just have the officers start it.
Correct, yeah.
So that's, you know, that, the difficulty is that sometimes you end up, people on the board and then they make it, you know, maybe. You have that, you know, so that's.
Right.
That's part of it is doing it now.
That could also happen as well. But I do, I was just gonna say, that would be my only concern, because with an election happening at the same time as back to school is happening and all the chaos is happening in life, maybe it's harder for people to know about it or have it be on the forefront, so.
I think it's harder to absorb right now for people, like if you're not in it, like your kid's going back to school and you're like, oh, and, and let me run together, like run for the board and let me, like, like.
But I like the idea too of like running for the board in the spring, by the knowing that you have time for your term.
Just apparently, you want to come to the meetings.
Or, yeah, like I went back to all the Zooms and started.
Well, yeah, I agree too. Because we have two community members' terms maybe at the same time, and it's sounding like one of us not staying, so not, and those are harder positions to fill, right? The community member ones, so doing it ahead of time, like I 100% think we should do that, for sure. I don't know how early in spring, that'll be probably, you guys can sort of look at that as far as where to, but spring feels really busy too.
Yeah, I know.
What about having a table at our make fair and starting to get some community members there?
And I do.
Talking about it.
I do think that spring feels a little bit busy.
Singling out.
When you're saying the commitment's not starting now, and it's like the outlook. So you can put it on your calendar for fall, so you don't fill that out before the meeting starts. But I do think though, that that is really not for tonight's meeting, I think tonight's meeting.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I mean.
Sounds like we can all agree that maybe some thought needs to go into when we put out for elections in future years. Obviously, we can't put out in spring twenty twenty two, that time has gone. So.
We don't need to.
We will, do we need to vote on?
Approved.
Person. Okay. So I heard Kristen was interested, was there anybody else that would be interested in volunteering?
I'll be at the back if or whatever is needed.
For what?
She said one person.
Yes.
Certified votes, if there was an action.
So far, I didn't know where we were at. So I will nominate officially, I, Chelsea will nominate Kristen to be our. What is the name of that?
Certifying.
Board, the board.
The board representative to the, to the election process.
That is an excellent motion, so can I accept your wording of the motion and, and we'll adopt that. So I have made that nomination.
I'll second it.
Great, thank you, Amber, with the second. Then let's go for the vote, Kristen.
Hi.
Great, Amber.
Hi.
Vicky.
Hi.
Trisha.
Hi.
Leanna.
Hi.
Chelsea, I. That takes us to four point eight point two, establish board members for the election. Oh, that's, that's what we did, sorry, that was four point two. Great, so that was both of them. Four point nine, approved meeting dates.
Let's go to email, not to us, when we approve it.
Yeah. Okay, so it looks like the adjustments to the meeting dates would be over the winter break and then again, and for the first week of school. And otherwise, everything's on the normal schedule.
So I'm gonna ask Alex if we want to do this again. Do we want to propose that it's the fourth week?
I was gonna ask that.
Instead of before.
Oh. Changed it because there was something we needed approved before school starts, but I don't know if that was COVID related or not. For the July meeting, should take care of what happens before school starts.
It was probably. There's nothing here that came up that we needed to do.
Right, and I think.
For that.
I think last time we bumped to the homework, maybe because of either COVID or funding concern, like they had some concerns and weren't sure where we would be at. So I think, if I remember correctly, we moved it forward because we didn't know if we have a cash flow problem.
Not, yeah, I think it was COVID stuff too, like as far as mandates and what we're, we didn't know what we were.
Because again, last year, we didn't know the budget until, so it might have been, we didn't know what our actual funding was going to be until, so it may have been around that too.
So I think planning for a fourth week, August meeting is good, and then calling a special meeting if you needed, under special circumstances, but planning for that. So. Yes, so with this meeting date calendar, and it sounds like August twenty second.
That'd be August twenty second.
Yeah, twenty second. So somebody would like to make a motion to approve this calendar of meeting dates with the amendment.
Yeah. So.
Make a motion to approve the amended twenty twenty two, twenty three meeting dates. Thank you, Leanna, for your motion, do I have a second?
This is Trisha, I'll second.
Thank you, Trisha. Your second, I will go for the vote, Kristen.
Hi.
Amber.
Hi.
Vicky.
Hi.
Trisha.
Hi.
Leanna.
Hi.
Chelsea.
Bye.
Next, I just, Amber.
Because you've already written it, right?
Four point ten is the parent handbook. I know Amber read it in preparation for this meeting. She gonna do us that? All the talking points. And so my biggest question, my biggest question, a question that I have, are we gonna do the same as we've done for the past couple of years where it's available, or try to provide it that way?
Will be posted on.
So a lot of money and paper. Great, I like.
Another change that's happened.
Under.
Running the photocopy, you can see during registration.
I mean, it's a good problem, but it's not a good problem.
Yeah. Problem, yeah.
Great, and does anybody have any questions on the parent handbook or the twenty two, twenty three square?
So it's going to have the dress code and all the new things that were approved tonight.
Those happen.
It already has it.
That's why this comes later in the meeting than this.
Yeah.
I was fairly confident in passing this.
Oh, that's good.
You brought up a point about the lick, the signature. So how are, for, we said for legal, we're talking about attendance, that legally, in a sense, having that signature that the parent received, if it's electronic.
I, I would have to go back and check, telling what that process uses.
And then also for dress code, I'm just thinking like for our S two, you know, well, I didn't see it's on the, well, it's on the website. If you don't have that signature, I know, you know, not to digress a lot, I'm trying to get on there, when we, I, we hire in our company for the handbooks, well, just like a couple things, that's like a notice to employees, like a notice appearance that maybe are more important, that could be available after registration or at the office, that could have a signature on file that there is.
I know, so you know, if I use an electronic signature on here, I used to confirm.
Okay.
That's why I wondered.
Okay, okay. And I'm thinking for, you know, not so much.
So I have such an excellent staff that I don't even get by. But I do, they're really on it. I know that there is a form, the agreements form and so forth, and I think it may be part of that.
Okay.
They could do the handles. But I would have to go back and check with Kelly and Magnus, where that is integrated into it. Yeah, so it's, it's part of our process. So that we have that, so we do have signature files, those. And then if they, they don't come, there's another process that we used to say, hey, show up to registration days. And so everything is on, pretty much everything is online now, a lot of it is online now, so. And that's two areas, lots of good things. So, but I would actually have to go back and check with the staff as to how they're covering that. I know they are, I just don't, it's not the old, here's the packet, sign this page.
Correct.
Yeah.
And like you said, the department will have new staff that will be put in and.
Yeah, come say it, process.
It's great. All right, does anybody have any other questions on the parent handbook? Hearing none, I will enter a motion to approve it.
This is Trisha, I'll make a motion to approve the parent handbook.
All right, thank you, Trisha, for your motion, and Vicky? Oh, put the sound on.
I second.
Great, thank you, Vicky, for the second. All right, yeah, I will go ahead and go for the vote, Leanna.
Hi.
Trisha.
Hi.
Vicky.
Hi.
Amber.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
And Chelsea, I. All righty, four point eleven, marketing videos. Look at those trees, they're so beautiful.
Hello, almost.
Okay, Vicky, I hope you can hear this, I think I said it up correctly.
Yes, I can hear.
At Blue Oak Charter School, we understand parents want the best education for their child, an education that meets the individual needs of the student while inspiring a lifelong love of learning. To find this, you need a school that encourages creativity, develops emotional intelligence, and fosters a sense of community. The problem is, most traditional schools fail to focus on the unique learning needs of the child, taking a one-size-fits-all approach to curriculum. At Blue Oak, your child will experience a complete, well-rounded approach to education through the successful implementation of the proven Waldorf methodology. But don't just take our word for it. Here is what Chelsea, a parent of one of our students, said. The Waldorf educational model has been amazing for my son. The integration of art and music to amplify and support the traditional academics has helped my son excel in every subject. Your child isn't average. Their school shouldn't be either. It's time to rethink your student's education. So here's how to make it happen. One, schedule a tour. Two, learn all the proven benefits of the Waldorf curriculum. And three, enroll your child on an enriching educational path. Your child's happiness, learning, and future matter to you, and they matter to us too. With Blue Oak, you can find the education you've hoped for and the unique instruction your child deserves. Schedule a tour today.
So I remember that. How long did I finish this for math?
I know.
Yeah. There's also kindergarten one, if you'd like to see it.
Yeah.
Of course, I would like to see the kindergartners.
Kindergarten sets the tone for the rest of your child's education. It's where they learn new things every day and form new friendships. But not every kindergarten classroom experience is the same. Unlike most traditional public schools, kindergarten at Blue Oak really engages all your child's senses and introduces them to valuable life skills that set them up for success, like slicing and dicing vegetables for snack time and even baking bread. Yum, that looks delicious. In addition to exploring the culinary arts, our young students tap into their creative side through painting, poetry, song and dance, and plenty of chances to let kids be kids and get some fresh air through fun activities like observing nature nat Geo style. You don't need binoculars to see that kindergarten at Blue Oak Charter School is an amazing way to jumpstart your child's education while still also encouraging their sense of wonder and joy. With half and full day class options, you can choose the school experience that maximizes your child's education and best fits your schedule. It's clear that kindergarten at Blue Oak Charter School provides a unique learning environment that gives children foundational skills for the next 12 years and beyond. Schedule a tour to see how your. Schedule a tour to see how your child will benefit from a more creative and nurturing curriculum.
Bravo. I want to call right now. Almost like Scotty has a picture.
Yeah.
I'm kidding. Yeah, yeah. Did it MC two?
Yes, it changed their name there now.
It's long for. No, they're long.
Yeah.
Long for.
Yeah. It's just good. This is another. Yeah, there was another firm called MC two in the Bay Area. Took me a couple of months to figure that out. Emailing them and they're emailing me. You're not cheap. They're in Oakland. Yeah, we'll do something. Anyway, so there was another firm to say, so anyway, but yeah, they're the ones that did that for us. One of the actors was one of the man going up to the window. He was one of their guys. Yeah, it was a fun day.
So. It's kind of neat because a lot of the footage is of like a lot of the younger kids, which is great because I know that's sort of our, you know, demographic to get them younger, but also like when kids kind of join the school, they've seen the video. It's like, oh. These kids are like in the school, you know, they're.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of neat. Like I'm looking at, that's right. Like I'm looking at the kinder and I'm like, oh, those are my daughter's first grade, you know, and our classmates and our kids that were first grade did their play, they're in the second grade. So.
Even the masks that blew up on the side.
Yeah. So it's very nice to that. I like it a lot.
Can't fit it. It's not can't fit.
No, it's the actual kids that are here and that's, you know, people will recognize their neighbors too.
Yeah, yes, yes, for sure.
And I would definitely say like I loved I loved what was the video and I think it would be definitely worth updating in the year to come, you know. The red of masks and that thing. Because I think for so many people, that's kind of one of the questions a lot of people have. It's like, well, what's the stance? What are? Where is where is that? And since we're seeing them less and less in the community, uh, having our videos here.
Without reshooting, they just add type like because there's script on there. Can I just put in the corner like masks optional? I don't know. Or even if you want to entertain that, but just since that's the current climate.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know. Again, I I don't know if that would I don't know if that would be more attention.
Yeah, yeah, actually.
Play more. Is that a point? Yeah.
Yeah, or if people are just gonna see that as a period piece.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's how it was.
I hope so.
Or how about just one little blurb that this, you know, I think that they've done that with the series that this film was um.
Depressed sometimes.
Yeah, during.
Yeah.
You know, twenty twenty. So now I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we saw a lot of kids without it. So we realized, oh, that must have been at the end of the CDC guideline, you know, just something like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice. I think.
I feel concerned about that. Let's put a note and see what the.
Yeah, that was a good way of saying it.
The kindergarten especially had less.
Yeah. The series sets up the names.
During such and such.
Yeah, that's a good one. And Mark, there must be a part of it.
Yeah.
Great amount of which I think I think you're thinking of great amount because I always say like this depicts post COVID.
There's teenagers too, I think, because of.
Well, there's yeah, I I have seen like interviews where they've said this was taped before COVID.
I think that was.
We've been on both of those.
So that you're, you know, so that they're it the interview where they're close together and chatting and they aren't criticizing and they aren't criticizing. So I think he's the same.
Yes, yeah. People aren't criticizing.
Yeah, this is gonna be on like on TV then? Is that what we're posting on YouTube online? Yeah.
Yeah. Social media.
Oh, yeah.
And.
On our website.
I wonder if we will.
Yeah.
For parents.
I mean, it'd be cool if we do. I know we're not supposed to be ideas here, but if we do some sort of campaign to parents to push out something like that, will it be able for parents to like push on the social media?
Well, if we post on ours, we'd share it.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Yeah, they can get a blue oak lease if they get a return on.
If it was you two right there, it's awesome.
Podcast, podcast, prepare.
I can hardly lose.
The first five friends.
Yeah.
I have some trip to Mexico.
Copy.
Yeah, right. Awesome.
You were sort of twenty five.
Those are great. So you you don't need any action on our.
No, that's just you've done the action already. That's just.
So just so.
Like we already approved, you may.
For you to enjoy, have a pleasant thing at the end of the meeting.
No, I love it. I'm super enjoying that. Thank you.
Yeah. To share your work, share the work that's been done.
No, they they were fantastic and I felt like did a good job of big capturing the essence of the school.
Yeah, I think that's a it's funny. You said like a fun day. That's our normal days too, like kids running around, the relationships you can see and smiling, you know.
I think the difference is the camera equipment running around with them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've always loved it.
Yeah, I do have that first grade um play was not planned with.
No.
It just landed.
It just turned out to be here that day.
Yeah, that was. Play D.
Yeah. It was.
Yeah.
It was fun.
Well, thanks for sharing.
Excellent. Alrighty. Well, does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the marketing videos? Hearing none, that'll take us into the executive director's report. Susan.
So um first of all, talk about registration days. We're Monday and Tuesday. And as always, it is just a joy to see the families come in and the kids see each other for the first time since the spring and. Oh, you're here. And oh, I love your dress. And where'd you get that? You know, and um, you know, uh, my story for this year is a couple of middle school boys, you know, came in with their parents. You see them walk in with their parents. And then they see each other. Cool. Now, you know, first they're they're kind of serious, but then they the the change of the attitude, but now like now we're together. We're cool. And it's just like laugh. I'm just thinking about that. It's just seeing children as children. And just enjoying being together. So that was, those are always fun days. And it was so well organized and um and a positive experience for everybody. So. I love that we're back at that. This is, you know, again, with COVID, we didn't do that. That community building comes from just even the first registration days. We're continuing to work on the hiring mainly for aides and we still do not have a Spanish teacher. So I'm reaching out to the college and some other options to see if there's an intern or something that can help us with that. And the teachers are already beginning to figure out what they're gonna do. So we will work that out. Things tend to work out and that's what I keep to say when people stress and like, you know, things do tend to work out. We had an interview for an aide earlier this week and it's late to be hiring aides, but this one had never applied for aid position before, but she was amazing. So haven't finished her project. We have her paperwork yet, but it's that sort of like, oh, this space was waiting for you to get here. You know, so that's the feeling is the kind of the way that I look at it. It's like, then we just haven't really found the right person. So we will. The uh MTSS team, Kairun and Sarah primarily, um that's the multi-tier system of support. They went in July to the trading in Orange County. And then shared information today with the faculty and there'll be more tomorrow um with the full staff. And uh Kairun's presentation was on um SEL in the math classroom. And so it it was really sort of that um way of making sure realizing what we're already doing. And why we do some of the group work we do and having teachers really think about their own practices. So it was really um positive to me, well-accepted. And really that, and we we get stressed about math, kids get stressed. We and it's like, but why? And so really discussing why and how we can make those changes and deal with how we could do a better job with that. So um it is um there and also discuss the um. The white supremacy issue of the fact that we do consistently see um IPOC children not do as well. And so how are we? Realizing that they have that those feelings about if they don't do well, are they feeling bad about their culture? And how can we sort of are their background or are they reflecting poorly on their um their race or their community? And how we can make sure that we are taking that into consideration when we're working with them when they're struggling to help them get. Past that and help them see themselves as successful in math. And so that was part of our discussion as well, which I appreciate. Um, and was well received. The the staff here is so thoughtful about that. I really appreciate that. Um. The uh we just we went over in the finance committee, we talked about the strategic plan and all of the work that that committee has done. And and how we're really getting through a lot of the things we've assigned. So I'm excited about moving forward with this team, this group also. And with the community as a whole to set some new goals. This we're kind of getting them done. So it's time to do the new ones. And um I'm sure as we do that, it will be there will be quite a bit about the new facility. I did tell faculty where the site was today, so it's officially out there. Um Chico Unified reached out to me Monday. It said, hey, we're ready to send stuff to city council, to the city. Um, so you know, are you ready to let us? And so I said, let me talk to everyone this week and um I will set out a parent square tomorrow. And then um it will be publicly notified.
Oh, my gosh. I know. And then maybe we can get permission from the current. Controllers upset site to put a banner up.
Yeah.
I mean, future home of.
Oh, that would be cool. Yeah.
So that's the next step. Anyway.
That excitement to people in the neighborhoods and areas driving by around.
We're gonna get that.
They can go, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Like what is this school that's gonna be?
This is coming soon. You have Blue Oak. Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That will be another reason why we might want to besides the masks, why we might be ready to update the videos in the next years because we'll be talking about the new segment. So.
Anyway. I think it would be great to do. In our housing in the state where we do like rehab videos as we're rehabbing a project.
Oh.
We love that stuff. They want to see the progress. So like if we did that on our social media, like the school progress, our parents would love to see this school be built as a progress. We did little snippets. It doesn't have to be professional, you know.
I don't know how to love that with that whole three stories to. They did, well, they probably just took photos like a lot.
Yeah.
Time lapse. Yeah, but it looked like it was like, because the sun, some of them, they were different times of the day. So however they timed them, it looked like the sun was going up and down and it smelled like in a day. But it was really fun.
Maybe we just build it in a day and then we won't worry about it.
Yeah. And maybe one day that you're gonna eat and the next day they the time they took it at nine or something like that. But it was really fun.
We need to talk to our marketing team about that.
And if they can make it like the sun going up and down, it's extra cool.
Or you need to time it just by the time lapse.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. That might be of value for next. So when we update it on here and we can tell them what's going on.
And even though I know we have marketing and marketing, but another are we gonna do yearbook next year in middle school? Do we know that?
Um, that is an elective. So we did do a yearbook this year. Did you see?
Yeah, and those are safe for the social media, a little bit of marketing. If the students, this was made or created and edited by Blue Oak staff.
Yeah.
Parents seeing that and you know, just a little bit more of marketing, but it's actually a little bit on kids. I don't know. Just saying.
We could totally do a little committee, I think, for like the middle schoolers. It like that was our job of.
Editing.
Creating, like doing like that editing and doing the videotaping and.
So we just have to have a teacher that wants to be that like too.
We do. We actually do. Um, Sarah Evelyn did it last year.
Oh.
Uh huh. So we're saying, yeah.
I know.
Just from a marketing standpoint.
To get over and actually film it.
Yeah.
You know, but like snapshots or.
Well, we we got like parent council bought them all cameras last year. So it's so cool. We can't do that.
I know. I know.
It's cool because this video kind of focused on kindergarten and elementary, but something that shows that, you know, like here for the long.
Yeah, the long term.
Long curves and really highlights some of that cool science and math.
You guys are just so good.
It's exciting.
Yeah, it is.
All right.
We were so excited that we could maybe actually talk about it with people.
Very good. That's. Yeah, I know. Yes.
I know. That's gonna be huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have been.
There were lots of oozin' ozzin' and claps today. They're really excited. Jennifer, who's been on the committee and known about it and has been like, you know, I can't tell anybody. Just got up and she says, and this walkway is gonna be over here. And then she was, you know.
She's like, now I can tell you all the things.
Yeah. And you know, yeah, so she was, she sold it pretty well. And it is because there is a nature walk not too far, you know, and she says, you know, it's this street, which everybody's like, oh, it's that street.
Everybody knows that area.
It's not a hard sell.
No, it's not.
There's only good things.
Yeah. So and so parents, we're going out tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh, that's exciting.
They put the welcome and then that. Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have a date though, right? That's what we're gonna discuss.
Yeah.
Well, let's go that morning for permit.
Exactly, exactly.
We do have that on the agenda. That's.
Just letting you know it's out.
Excellent.
Right.
Oh.
Nice, nice transition.
Alrighty. Did you have anything else for your report?
No, I'm done.
All right. Can anybody have any questions or comments for Susan before we head into closed session? Okay, excellent. Kick us out, Alex. Kick us in, kick us out.
That's what I was gonna say.
Or.
Could I do?
So did you hear that? All right. So reporting out from our closed session, uh, no action was taken on item six point one. That'll take us into item seven. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September twentieth at six P M. Great. I will see you all in September.
All right. Good night.
Good night. Thanks for being here, Vicki.
Sure.
Hi, Vicki.
Night.
Well, that's how my hometown is.